All right, I call this meeting to order at 5 o'clock. We acknowledge that we have, um, we are meeting in person. Members of the public may address the board by attending our in-person meetings and submitting a public comment card. We cannot take public comment through the online platform and cannot guarantee online streaming if that platform malfunctions for any reason. Members of the public are encouraged to share their thoughts and concerns with me, our, the board president, at sequin@petk12.org if they're not able to attend in person. As you can imagine, I cannot really check emails during a board meeting, so if you send it, I will get back to you in the next couple of days. With that, um, any comments from the public on closed session items? Seeing no public, I will adjourn us to closed session until 6:00. All right. I'm gonna reconvene the meeting at, my watch says 6, it might be 6:01, sorry. Um, and trustee cloud will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And first up, we have recognition of students of the month, and let's start with our Colts at Kennelworth.
September 20th. Junior High School is proud to introduce our September student of the month, Jackson Nova. Jackson has been chosen student of the month because he is one of Kennelworth's most outstanding students and one of our finest citizens. A 4.0 student, Jackson's teacher describes him as focused, hardworking, willing to take chances and answer questions. Mr. Ra, who has for a second year in his Kennelworth television broadcasting class declared, "All hail Jackson, king of KTV anchors." Jackson is an absolute star. Mr. Bean, Jackson's English teacher enthusiastically adds-
Mr. Bean, Jackson's English teacher enthusiastically adds, "Jackson shows up every day to class ready to learn. Jackson strives to be a better reader and writer. He gets a great, he sets a great example for others. While Jackson is not excelling in his classes, he can be found playing football as a member, as a proud member of Petaluma Panthers. After school, Jackson would like to attend a university somewhere in California. We at Kennelworth are confident that Jackson will continue to succeed, and we are, and we look forward to the day we watch him host College Game Day on ESPN. Congratulations, Jackson."
Student of the month, September 2024. Kennelworth Junior High School is proud to announce our September student of the month, Nia Reynolds. Nia has been chosen the student of the month because she is one of the Kennelworth's most outstanding students, one of our brightest stars, and one of our finest role models. Impressively, in 7th grade, Nia earned an A+ grade in all of her classes both semesters. Nia has continued to impress her teachers in 8th grade. Ms. Martin, Nia's PE teacher, shared, "Nia is a great all-around student. She brings a positive attitude and her fun personality to class every day. Nia is well-liked by her peers, but more importantly, she is respected by them." Ms. Rutter, Nia's math teacher, shared, "Nia is hardworking, respectful, kind, and a great team member. Not only does Nia excel academically, but she is proud to be an elite club National League soccer player. Nia is also a sprinter on the Kennelworth Colts track team and has recently started playing sand volleyball. We at Kennelworth are very proud of Nia and know she has a bright future ahead of her. Congratulations, Nia."
Congratulations, Jackson and Nia, and can Jackson and Nia's friends and family stand up as well? We want to recognize that it takes a village. Awesome, so we're gonna hop across town to Petaluma Junior High and hear from the Bantams.
Petaluma Junior High is proud to announce our September student of the month, McKenna Butts. McKenna was chosen as PJHS's September student of the month because she is kind, hardworking, and gets along well with everyone. Her math teacher said that McKenna influences other students through her intelligence, worth ethic, participation, and willingness to help. Mr. Osir, McKenna's history teacher, added that McKenna brings a positive attitude to the classroom, is conscientious, and cheers on her peers for their successes. McKenna truly represents what it means to be Banta. McKenna said that some of her favorite things about junior high have been meeting new people and forming new connections in her classes. McKenna's favorite classes this year are history, PE, and English. McKenna enjoys her teachers like Ms. McGahy and Mr. Rieske, who she says are kind, funny, and make learning fun. In high school, McKenna is looking forward to the elective classes, clubs, and attending activities like football games and dances. Outside of school, McKenna plays volleyball and spends time working as a counselor at Redwood Empire Gymnastics. McKenna likes to spend time with her friends and loved ones and go into the lake. McKenna is interested in interior design and hopes to attend Cal Poly after high school. McKenna's mother had this to say, "McKenna makes us so proud to be her parents. She's grown into a responsible and independent young woman. We have never have to question if she's completed her homework or assignments. She is always organized and ready to go. We love her confidence and tendency in trying new things. She thrives in any environment she is in, all while being kind and compassionate leader. We are so proud of all McKenna's hard work and can't wait to watch all she accomplishes in her future. We are lucky to have McKenna representing PJHS as our September student of the month. Congratulations, McKenna."
Petaluma Junior High School is proud to introduce our September student of the month, Shepard Sykes. Shepard was chosen as PJHS's September student of the month because his teachers agree that he is an outstanding scholar and citizen. Mr. Lemansky, Shepard's history teacher, said that Shepard has a maturity above his peers and a great sense of humor. Mr. Lang, Shepard's science teacher, shared that he can always count on Shepard to add to a class discussion. Shepard's PE teacher, Mr. D, added that Shepard is a hard-working and respectful student who consistently demonstrates positive behavior and good participation. Shepard was also a member of the PJHS track team last spring. Shepard shared that some of his favorite things about PJHS are the greetings he gets from staff every morning and how accepting everybody is. In addition to his accomplishments at school, Shepard volunteers at his church and as a counselor in training at Sonoma State. Shepard enjoys reading in his spare time and is passionate about all things automotive. When asked what he is looking forward to most about high school, Shepard has this to say. "I'm probably looking forward to the engineering electives and expanding the community of my school. I'm looking forward to seeing my friends that are now freshmen that I haven't seen for a while. After high school, Shepard would like to attend UC Berkeley or SSU to study aerodynamics and then pursue a career in Formula One racing and the McLaren Formula One team." Shepard's family is also incredibly proud of his accomplishments. His mom, Catherine, shared that Shepard is a naturally inquisitive self-starter. Shepard is a naturally inquisitive young man and has always been a self-starter. When he is interested in a subject, he will learn all that he can and then experience it for himself. He, his love of cars and racing has taken him from watching it on TV, reading books and magazines on the subject, and going to races and meeting drivers at Sonoma Rice Way. This is a testament to his commitment and drive, no pun intended, to be a lifelong learner. At school, Shepard has participated in track in the 400 and 800 meter races and shot put while still maintaining excellent grades. We couldn't think of a better student to represent PJHS. School staff and his family members agree that Shepard is a uniquely driven student who is an excellent representation of PJHS. Congratulations, Shepard.
Congratulations, McKenna and Shepard. Can your friends and family please stand up and be recognized for your hard work too? Awesome, thank you, and then over to Casa Grande, let's hear from some gauchos.
Hi, everybody. Uh, hold on, I have the script on my phone, let me pull it up. Uh, unfortunately, our president, vice president, and secretary all could not make it this evening. Uh, so I am here, hope it's ample compensation. Um, so our first, uh, student of the month for Casa Grande is Mariano Wininger. Uh, Mariana is a senior at Casa Grande High School who looks forward to going to pre-law at four-year university with a future goal of becoming an attorney. Her interests lie in policy development, law and justice, and the execution of fair legal system. During her time at Casa Grande, she has taken a strong interest in a variety of subjects, including AP US History, among nine other AP classes, and 16 dual enrollment classes at the JC, with a focus on sociology, psychology, and human development in hopes of gaining a strong background in experiences in social justice in her community. Outside of school, she also demonstrates this passion by taking part in many social activities, such as Junior Commission on Human Rights and the Junior Commission on the Status of Women. She has also previously been an intern for Congressman Huffman at, and at, and a Casa Grande delegate for California Girls State, along with a current intern at North Bay Labor Council, all of which have been opportunities to exercise youth leadership and involvement at a larger scale. She is also a president of Casa Grande's Political Literacy and Tutoring Clubs, focusing on equitable dispersible of education. She also makes sure to balance her extracurriculars and her schoolwork with her part-time job at a pizzeria. In her free time, Mariana enjoys reading books of any genre, baking, hiking, listening to Taylor Swift, and watching a variety of films. In the future, her main goal is to provide a voice to those in her community that feel unheard by their representatives, defended, defended equitably and thoughtfully by their justice system. Um, I don't think she's here tonight. Yeah. Our next student of the month is Madeline Kiefer. By the, can you all hear me okay, by the way? Okay, just wanna make sure. Uh, our next student of the month is Madeline Kiefer. Madeline is a committed student who has dedicated herself to many AP honors and JC courses. Her favorite of them was AP Calculus, which has led her to what she now hopes to major in, engineering. Outside of school, Madeline has been rock climbing since she was seven, and both competes in USA competitions as well as does outdoor trips with her team. Through her sport, she has gained a close-knit group of friends and mentors that she will never forget and be grateful for, as well as valuable problem-solving skills. Madeline hopes to continue to pursue her love of mathematics and climbing in the far future. Congratulations, Madeline.
Congratulations to Mariana and Madeline, maybe you're watching this now or later. Um, I'm assuming we have no friends or family in the room, but just in case, no, nope, okay. And then we'll bounce over to Petaluma High and hear from our Trojans.
Hi, everyone, um, so first up, we have Grace Forney, who is currently attending her fourth year at Petaluma High School. While attending Petaluma High School, Grace has involved herself in the school through Future Farmers of America and through soccer. Grace is a captain on the Petaluma High School varsity soccer team. Soccer provides Grace with a competitive environment that pushes her on and off the field. Through soccer, Grace has learned the importance of teamwork and working hard to inspire her teammates. Grace is also extremely involved in the Petaluma FFA chapter. Through FFA, she has served as a year-long chairperson, competed in public speaking competitions, and has done countless community service events. FFA has been a great way for Grace to stay connected to her community by sharing her love for agriculture and community service. In addition to extracurricular activities, Grace has maintained a high GPA throughout her four years. She has taken many AP classes that she feels have set her up for success in the future. She particularly enjoys history and math classes. She's very appreciative of her amazing teachers who have provided her with useful skills for her future academic aspirations. After Petaluma High School, Grace hopes to attend a four-year university to major in business. She feels prepared for the future and is excited about the new experience coming her way. Congratulations, Grace. Next up, we have Olivia Leonard. Olivia is serving as this year's ASV president and student board member at Petaluma High School. She loves participating in her school's community and culture by taking part in school events such as football games, rallies, and spirit days. She has been in ASV for four years of high school now and has been loving ASV as a senior. Outside of school, she has a job at Usher Art Gallery, which is downtown. Along with being a part of other clubs such as Interact, she has restarted a club called TSA where she gets students' opinions to bring to the board. This year, she has also joined the tennis team. Lastly, she is a proud member of Linkrew at her school where she is helping plan a movie night for freshmen. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Grace and Olivia. Um, can I have any of Grace and Olivia's friends and families, please, stand and be recognized? Awesome, okay, students of the month, sit tight, we want to get a picture of all of you, but first, I want to hear the site reports from Casa Grande and Petaluma. So, last year, y'all did them together, I don't know if this year they're all together, or you, okay, perfect, then you all can come on up.
Where do I, where do I point the remote at? Okay. Okay, I'm Ella, I'm the PHS representative.
And I'm Jack, and I am the admin relations executive at Casa Grande.
Okay, so we're gonna start with Petaluma High School. Um, we're gonna throwback to the summer, we spent three days getting to know each other, getting a jumpstart, and planning out the school year. We slept overnight at school, which was really fun, and it was a great way to meet all the new additions to ASV this year. And then we had our back-to-school neon dance, which was very fun, we had a great turnout, lots of bright colored clothes, good music, just some really good times, and yeah, Sir Napoli danced with us, that was really fun. Uh, recently, we were very, very lucky to have Scott Bakovic join our school. We collabed with Casa here, they came and visited us. So that's a picture of us with Scott. He's very, he's an expert on ASV, he taught us so many new things about leadership and inclusivity, and it was a really, really great day, we learned a lot, and I think ASV is going to be very, very much improved in the future. And then last week, we traveled to Windsor High School, where we went to a Making Connections event where there was ASV from like 15 schools. We got to meet so many new people, we got to learn, we got to see different perspectives from different schools and what they're up to. We got lots of new ideas that, you can see how many kids were there. That's only like half of it, it was really fun. And then also, we had Senior Sunrise, which is a yearly tradition where all the seniors get to school really early in the morning and watch the sunrise together. This is a great way to really like bond together the senior class, and it was just a great way to start off the school year. And then Club Rush was a few weeks ago as well, great turnout this year, I think the best we've had. That's a picture of me and my friends at our club stand, TSA, and that's an overhead picture of everyone signing up for clubs. This is a great way to meet new people. And then upcoming events we have are the Homecoming Dance Game and Float Parade. We're also in the middle of, um, celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, so we're having an event called Noche España to honor that, and then of course, April is coming up as well.
Yep. Uh, okay, so we also had our ASV camp over the summer, uh, and we had an amazing turnout. Um, actually, our class went from just under 40 students to, uh, just under 60 this year, uh, which is really great, love to see that. Um, the majority of our newcomers were underclassmen, and it's really great to see that, you know, the word that we've been putting out about our program has been working, and we're getting a lot of new interest for Casa's next generation, so to speak, um, so that's really awesome to see. Uh, we also had our Senior Sunrise, this year went a lot better than last year because there actually was a sunrise this year, uh, and it wasn't freezing cold and 40 degrees. Um, we also served crumble cookies and hot chocolate and coffee, uh, and I think that helped lure people in a little bit. Um, so yeah, that was a great success this year. Uh, we also had our Carnival Day Casa this year, this is one of our more community-oriented events, so, uh, while we do encourage members of the Casa Grande community, uh, to come join us, it's also open to our entire community, um, just around the area. Um, and really, all it is, is a fun little gathering, uh, we have food trucks come, we have games set up like cornhole, um, and it's just a fun way to put Casa on the map for some families that might be in the area. Um, just a fun night. Uh, we also recently held our Club Rush, um, and it was a humongous success. We set up in the Ole, which is in the middle of our campus, um, and we had an addition of lots of new clubs this year, um, which is great. I personally joined way more than I can actually go to, uh, but there's like just so many really interesting concepts and awesome, um, dedicated students out there, uh, and it's great to see that out on the campus as well. Um, hmm, don't know why there's no pictures here, but we've had our, uh, first home game pretty recently. Uh, we did lose, but it's okay, we're making a comeback, guys, we're gonna make a comeback, I promise. Uh, and then we've been hosting some lunchtime events, and we recently had a spirit week that was just colored by class, anything but a backpack day, my personal favorite, uh, Crazy Socks with Sandals, Jersey Day, and Tropical Day. Uh, and then we recently had a lunchtime event where students could spin a wheel and pie a teacher in the face. People loved that one, for sure, and not, not so much the teachers, but the students had a lot of fun with that one.
The teachers volunteer?
Yeah, we did get volunteers, don't worry, yeah, we're not just gonna let some random people pie teachers in the face. Uh, but yeah, we did get a lot of dedicated teachers to volunteer for that, uh, which was really awesome. Uh, and then Making Connections, we also went to the leadership training with Scott Bakovic, and that was a great day. We talked a lot about, you know, our plans moving forward for the year, what activities we have currently that we like, what we want to develop a little further and maybe make better, and some ideas that maybe are getting old and we just kind of want to scrap. Um, great day, full of great people. Um, and then our upcoming events are obviously Homecoming, and that includes the parade, the rally, game, royalty dance, all that stuff. Uh, and then Casa Grande Kickoff, which last year was a new event, uh, that we spearheaded. Basically, um, it's just a little activity before or after the Homecoming Varsity Football Game with just some food trucks and games, similar setup to that of our Carnival de Casa. And that's all from me.
I have a, I have a question for each one of you. So, just real quick, what is anything but a Casa, uh, what, what is anything but a backpack day?
Oh, um, so, it's what it sounds like, so everyone's supposed to bring, uh, all their stuff to school in anything but a backpack. So we had, sorry, yeah, of course. Uh, we had people pull up with coolers, and we had, we had a one-wheelbarrow, actually, that was impressive. Um, yeah, we had shopping carts, uh, grocery bags, all sorts of stuff. It was fun, it's always fun walking around campus, seeing what people bring, some people really get into it, it's fun to see that. We had someone bring a Star Wars Lego set box that was like as big as the kid, it was crazy. Um, but yeah, it was a really awesome day, and I think last year was our first year doing it, and it got great publicity, so we just figured, um, let's do it again.
And then for PHS, I was just wondering, what is TSA? And you said you were gonna be bringing, that it's, well, it's yours, right, but you were gonna be, you mentioned it too?
Yes, so I'm the vice president of it, TSA stands for Trojan Student Ambassadors, so basically, the whole point of the club is like, if you as a student feel like you have something, a concern or an issue, you can come to our club meeting and talk to us about it, and then the idea is that Olivia has a great connection to the board, so she's able to present it to the board, and we're just trying to like make all students feel like they have a voice on campus, which is like our biggest goal for the school year, so this is a great way to do that.
Sounds fabulous, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna take a four-minute recess, and I want a picture of all my students of the month right up here, please. It is officially reconvened, so let's hear about our ELOP Summer School Summary. Now that is officially like two days after summer, it is not long over, it has only been fall for two days, doesn't feel like fall yet.
So, the planning's already begun.
Hi, my name's JJ Lynch, and I'm the coordinator for Expanded Learning for Petaluma City Schools, and to my right-
I'm Kristen Robinson, I was the TOSA for our summer learning program this year, and I normally teach at McKinley.
We also have some of our program partners from Boys and Girls Club, Stephen and Eduardo and Dani. Uh, Stephen and Eduardo are gonna get up and talk when their slide is ready. So we just wanna start, are you in charge of the clicker? Oh, yeah, please be, thank you. Um, so I just wanna start with some of the review and basics, we're all familiar again with Expanded Learning. And we want to really continue to make the transition from a childcare concept to high-quality Expanded Learning. The one thing that's different there is the learning part is really explicit, and we want to be mindful of that, not only in our summer programs, but also in our after-school programs. There are some actual requirements of these that are expected of us. We are expected to provide some type of academic component, an enrichment component, and physical activity component. We have regular audits, and we are right up there on the FPM lists. We also have set up quality standards that we are held accountable to within that FPM process. All right, the nuts and bolts, ELOP was not the only funding source this summer. We also had some SER3 summer grants that were specifically for current ACES programs, that one, that's what made us eligible, and so we were able to braid the funding. Um, and then these parameters that you guys know so well, these were the grades, I don't want to read them all, is that okay? Thank you. These were the grades that were served, we did the nine-hour day, the 30 intercession days, summer is just a component of the school year, right? So right now, our district is offering more than the minimum requirement, those summer days are incorporated into that, but we're also doing it during spring breaks and what have you. Um, the ratios are the same, and then these were our logistics, we, the Monarchs hosted our summer program this year. It was eight to five, and those were the dates.
Can I ask you a real quick question about, um, what do you do with the year-round schools? Um, they just come, because they have different, uh, you know, vacation times, huh?
What do we do with the year-round for summer or for all of our-
For summer and for all year, like if you said that, that you had spring, that you covered spring break and other breaks, how do you do that with, um?
So, right now, our program partners at Pengrove and Cherry Valley are running program, right now. Yeah. Exactly, so they are running program. Um, we take a look at those calendars and try to make that as equitable as possible. Um, we'll touch on that, because we made an, we made a little modification. Generally, our summer programs are 20 days, and, um, we did a little extension just because we were looking at the year calendars and comparing the days that were offered, and it wasn't super even. Um, and so we made, uh, we shifted, we made a pivot, and we'll touch on that later.
And we did have Pengrove and Cherry Valley students at our summer program, they just left, um, the last week.
So these were the old lessons learned from the summer of 2023. So these were kind of things that we discussed, we debriefed. I forgot to say that Kristen also has been a teacher in PCS summer programs for probably 100 years.
Eight, I think.
Eight, okay, okay, so she's been there before I have been in this district, and so I couldn't think of a better person to provide the historical kind of perspective and the whys and help moving forward with these changes that we're being tasked with. So she was a teacher in the summer of 2023 where we had our very first like nine-hour day and a shift from the summer school model to a summer program or a summer learning model. Some of the things that we shifted on for this past summer, we streamlined enrollment, uh, there were site-based registration nights, um, bilingual staff members, the student experience, this is for our other slide. It's all right. It's all right. Um, for the student experience, we had deeper collaboration. One of the things that we did that was different, we noticed when we did a pre and post-assessment for the summer program, we lost a lot of those days, and so I want to just front-load this for our data piece, because that was one of the shifts we made, do you want to go deeper into the teacher experience?
Yeah, so, in the past for summer school, uh- Yeah, so in the past for summer school, um, long time ago, teachers were tasked with four to five hours, teach everything you have anywhere from fifteen to thirty kids in a grade level and we don't know any of their data. So this year, we used our, um, CRLP data that all of our K-two teachers have been and are currently still getting trained on. But we use our BPSD data and our STAR data to really, um, group the students. And we use that from their, their end of the year data. So we didn't need to use any summer school days to, uh, do program placement or things like that. And we also had collaboration time with Boys and Girls Club where we met and did joint PD. We, uh, with the PCS nurse as well. So we were all on the same page about all of our students. And, um, my position changed from a principal to a TOSA, so I could really focus on the, um, the grouping of the students based on their data and having really, uh, mindful student work.
I do wanna say that the orientation days that the Boys and Girls Club did, so what they did is they did, we did a day without the teachers. So while we were doing teacher PD, we had, was it one?
Two days, Thursday, Friday.
Was it a full week? So we could hear the Boys and Girls Club staff.
Oh, yeah, they sang Little Red Vagon real good. Well, I was a summer camp counselor before I was a teacher and I did shed a tear when I heard their camp song.
I think a lot of, a lot of what we wanted to focus on was a lot of joy and positive experience in a learning environment. Uh, some of our kids don't necessarily have positive experiences in school environments. And so we wanted to change that and have learning, cuz I believe both can happen. It's not an either or. Um, so the summer learning model. We stuck with the morning academics, but what we really did is to create this larger comprehensive program. We partnered with Boys and Girls Club and they were the primary contact for these parents. And they ran this nine-hour day. But what we did in the morning with our PCS teachers is we would do these small group leveled pullouts of up to twelve kids, one in literacy, one in math with the PCS. And then they would, there was a very intensive rotation system. Uh, and they would, these kids would just kind of cycle in and out. And when they were not getting intervention, they were doing the brain game. Talk about that later, too. In the afternoon, the teachers would debrief with Kristen. Boys and Girls Club then just took it. And that's when we had the specialty programs coming in, guest speakers and field trips. And then there's this two-week extension that we did. Um, was interesting because it was continued care for families who needed it. Boys and Girls Club ran it. The teachers were not there. So this was really more of a camp style. They continued the brain game. So there were still literacy and STEM and some really academic kind of infused activities happening. And it wasn't necessarily all the families that were in the summer learning model. There were other families who needed care for those two weeks that kind of joined in if they needed it. Oh, this is you, Kristen.
Right. Um, so this year, we made a shift in our literacy curriculum because we were using a curriculum that required in program assessments and their assessments did not align with anything outside of that program. So we were able to use, um, the University of Florida Literacy Institute's Foundations Program, which is a science of reading-based phonics program and foundational skills that, um, correlated amazingly with our district's BPST. So everyone had a spot. Um, then for our students who needed more comprehension, fluency, upper-grade skills, we used Time, uh, Time for Kids magazines and other, uh, we use some of our wonders materials from our district curriculum as well. And then for math, we used, uh, a game-based curriculum called Math for Love and it covers a lot of topics. Um, it focuses more on the standards of mathematical practice, how to talk about math, how to explain your process when doing math and it gets that oral language with a lot of our students are, um, multi-language learners. So all that oral language, um, was really great for them. And then Boys and Girls Club used their summer brain game curriculum. And we, um, observed a few fun lessons, learning about things like anime and just Japan as a whole, their culture, um, Brazil, we watched some Brazil, um, the dance fight.
Copper wire?
Yes, thank you. Um, and so the, and the students were really engaged. They got to do a lot of, um, art and activities and movement during that time as well.
Boys and Girls Club, um, can you guys just, when you introduce yourself, just let them know what school site they're at?
Yeah.
And someone?
Alright, so howdy. My name is Eduardo Garcia Gutierrez. I'm the director at the McNear School Site.
Uh, and then, uh, I'm Stephen Barrios. I'm the director at the McDowell Boys and Girls Club and PCS, uh, since I was, uh, started at the Sarah all the way through Kennelworth and Casa, so.
And then I was Wa. I went to Meadow and then I changed PCS when I did Kennelworth and then Casa. And so, uh, we're gonna tell you guys a little bit more about summer camp. So our summer camp is split into theme weeks. So a couple of examples of those would be like Going Green, which is more of a nature and conservation-based week. Then we have Master Builders, which is STEM-based, where the kids get to use different items and things to build, uh, different things. And then we also have Splash, which is a more fun, like water-based programming activities. So things like water balloons and things like that. And so, uh, a big portion of our day is summer brain game. And so that's kind of our way of mitigating summer learning loss. And so some danger, uh, some daily instructional activities include reading, creative writing and cultural lessons. And we also had things like drones and then cooking programs to kinda spice everything up. So the way the kids have different fun things to do that they might not be able to do at home or during the normal school year. And so we also went on some pretty cool field trips like the San Francisco Zoo. Went to the epicenter, went to Spring Lake, Doran Beach and A's Game and even Cal Skate. So we had a lot of fun, you know?
Uh, yeah, so with our field trips, um, here's some of the pictures of, um, our zoo field trip, which was targeted towards our younger members. Um, and then right in the middle, you see our epic, um, uh, it is to the epic center. That was for the older kids, got to enjoy some bowling as well as the arcade games. Um, and then moving on to our next slide, in addition to the field trips and the brain game, we also run enrichment programs. Um, so some of the topics that we are sports and recreation, um, arts and creative expression as well as STEM. Um, so in these pictures, you can just see some kids engaging in those enrichment programs.
I think it's also really important to like kind of talk about how we just pride ourselves in giving kids like experiences that they don't get to have at school or at home because of like, you know, different things. So, yeah. Boys and Girls Club's a lot of fun.
Okay, data, it's time to crunch the numbers. Um, so our first slide is our attendance data. We compared our twenty twenty-three summer program to the twenty twenty-four summer program. Um, we enrolled more kids, had a higher ADA. I, I don't think we're where we wanna be or can be. When we start reflecting on how we can improve this, we're always talking about earlier enrollment. Earlier enrollment, get an earlier start on it as far as, uh, families. We can start planning now, but we really need to start that contact with families early in the new year. And I mean like the calendar year, not the school year, right? Uh, one of it, so I think that's one of our points of improvement. I separated out the extended, the two weeks extended program. Cuz I do what we, we capped the enrollment at a hundred because we needed to be respectful of staffing. This was not something that was pre-planned. This is something we're like, how do we make this better? And there was such a huge gap between the end of our traditional program and the beginning of school. And if you look, when we went with the student need and the family's need, our, our average attendance increased. And I think that told us and gave us some cues on to how we approach identifying our students for next school year. Next one. Alright, this one is, I'm, this one is exciting to me. So we took a little risk. Uh, historically in a summer learning program, not historically, but generally, you, you adopt a curriculum that you're gonna use and it comes with a pre-assessment and a post-assessment, right? You do it at the beginning. Generally, it takes, research recommends at least five weeks for, for learning to stick. Ours are generally four weeks. And you do this pre and then you do this post. And the numbers are usually really good, because what happens if you do a pre and then you do this instruction and then you test right after? It's amazing, right? They just really retained it for that time. Very few people actually go broader, right? Are we moving a larger needle? When we started talking about last year in twenty twenty-three and how many days of intervention we lost doing the assessments, like how are we gonna do this? And we kind of took a risk and said, let's look at STAR. So let's take end of year STAR and beginning of year STAR and not do any pre and post in between. And I'm like, that's a little scary. It kind of makes my heart race right now. Um, and again, just like the sun can't take sole responsibility for growing a flower. The summer program cannot take sole responsibility because there are too many factors, right? And we're not even, when we're doing this, the U-Fly program, we're not even doing that with thoughts about STAR. But this is what we got. And these are kids that were all identified as struggling with literacy. That's how they were referred into the program when we worked with reading specialists. And as you can see, a majority of them either accelerated or increased their STAR scores or did not experience any type of learning loss with respect to that STAR. And of the thirty, I kind of drilled down. I tried not to get into a rabbit hole with this. But of the thirty-four percent, a majority of them did not attend over seventy-nine percent of those instructional days. Uh, do you have anything else that I don't know?
Um, I, we use the STAR, um, generally for, cuz everyone kindergarten through sixth grade either takes the early lit or the STAR reading. Um, the BPST, I don't know how familiar you are with reading assessments, but there's twelve, um, components of the BPST. It goes all the way from letter name recognition through four-plus syllable words. Um, so there was, I tried for a few days. It was, it's impossible to show cuz sometimes you go down in one because you learned a new skill, but that skill goes up. So that was tricky to see, even though our programming was directly correlated to that. Um, it was, it's hard to show that without like writing a paragraph for each kid, uh, what you see.
Alright. Alright, the parent survey data. We just wanted to do, I, I really don't wanna read this. So a lot of parents really love the program. Um, there were some comments that were, they were able, I wanna say with the girls, but for doing that. Um, the, I just pulled out some comments, but I, uh, it was striking to me that, uh, they just really valued it. You know, and it felt good. So that's all. What do you gotta say about that? Families loved it.
And there were also, um, not just Eduardo and Stephen, but so many bilingual staff members, if not all or most, but that everyone really was able to communicate and get, make sure everyone was signed up for field trips. Everyone had that equity piece that, um, you know, we care about so much at PCS.
They really went above and beyond. They went to school sites to register families. They did evenings where they just pulled out all the iPads and just helped everyone register for these programs. It was pretty amazing. Okay, so lessons learned from this year, the planning begins. Um, family experience, earlier registration to increase enrollment. We gotta streamline the field trip system. Um, we'll work with you guys. It was super popular. Um, and, and again, that takes a lot of coordination with our transportation department. I have to tell you how many departments in this district, I, I, I can't think of one department that isn't touched by our summer programs. Uh, so it was awesome. And because it was so awesome, we need to, we need to keep working on that. Uh, student experience, uh, more choice for older students. Uh, older kids, it's a spoiler alert, they really don't wanna hang out on an elementary campus over the summer, especially the sixth graders. Um, so I feel like if we can lead and get some of those clubs that are geared towards the older students and get that advertised to them before the program starts and have them being able to do youth voice and choice, that we may get more buy-in. Um, so we're gonna work on that, on appealing to older kids. Hopefully word spreads. And, um, try to do something between the end of the program and the beginning of school. Not a summer program, but some type of touch where we can do a reading thing or a library thing. And then teacher experience, it's you, girl.
Yeah, um, so this year, like I said, we shifted, um, our curricula. So our, our PD was geared towards that. We also, um, got some new things to add to our program, but they came right when the program started. So we were able to kind of explore a little bit and we're looking forward to really diving into that piece, um, into our PD next year. Um, we have the dual immersion program at McDowell as well as newcomers all across the district coming from Eastern Europe, coming from Latin America countries. Um, and so really focusing on that ELD piece and multilingual, multilingual learners. Um, and we are hoping to be able to hire some bilingual teachers, um, to support in whatever capacity that may look like with what the enrollment looks like next year. It's always an ebb and flow of, we can't plan too much until we know who's coming. We can't know who's coming until we have the support and the program. So all those pieces going together. And then we're continuing the assessment discussion of, our graph had some red. Red happens. Overall, though, um, doing that end of year and beginning of year assessments really allowed for all of our days to hit the ground running and really get these students where they need with their practice in literacy.
No questions?
Sure, that was, thank you very much. That was great. Um, a couple, um, I wanna start with, um, with S R funding going away. How, what's your anticipation of how this is gonna move forward? What, what's gonna change next year as a result?
Well, I think Amanda agrees it'll be easier to spend our ELOP money. Um, I was, uh, it's, it's kind of, uh, the challenge, it's like a, a gift and a curse, right? I applied, we applied for the S R three funding. It was specifically for Expanded Learning Programs, I thought. I was all still in like the starvation mode that ACES in twenty-first century. So obviously, we were eligible, we were gonna get it and I got it. And then it's like, we gotta spend it. So I feel like, um, I don't feel like losing it. We still have our ELOP money and I think it's a, a pretty substantial funding source for the summer program. Uh, so everything's gonna be perfect and safe.
That's great. Wow, that's amazing.
A lot of the S R money that we spent on, on personnel, obviously, but any investments that we made in the materials and supplies were with the long-term in plan. So it was more like build, trying to build infrastructure. So like buying a STEM program that will see us into the, well, you know, the next ten years, right?
Yeah.
So hopefully, it just kind of gave us a jumpstart.
Yeah. Um, on the, on the STAR testing, what, can you, what, what are the months that that happened, the pre and the post?
The end of year test happened, um, either at the very end of May or the very beginning of June. The window's two weeks minus the last week of school, so.
Yeah. And then on the fall side?
And then the fall was, um, what month was it? Was the last two weeks of August.
And you already got the data from?
Yeah, we are, yeah. So that was, I, we took it and compared every student that attended and compared their May score to their August score.
Did you happen to compare with a cohort group that didn't go to? I mean, that'd be.
That was the rabbit hole I was trying to avoid.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, absolutely. You have to then find like kids with the same kind of, uh, literacy.
I can tell you as a, as a teacher for a long time in the district that, um, it's ki, it's really hit or miss with, with those pinpoints.
Sure.
Um, so I don't, I mean, I could try, but I don't know if it would be valid.
I mean, what you did already is, it's wonderful. That's great. And could you just remind me, please, the eligibility for, uh, for a family to participate?
For ELOP, it, those are our duplicated pupils. So those are multilingual learners, students that qualify for free or reduced lunch, homeless and foster.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. And now we have a transportation update. Alright, tonight we're going to do a quick presentation on um, student transportation for school related trips. Um, in February of last school year, there was an, a discussion by the board. On the introduction of a new transportation policy and what the potential impacts would be. There was some questions asked where we went back and we did a little research and. Talked with site administrators and came back to the board on February twenty seventh to discuss it further. On March twenty six, there was a presentation, um, including cost logistics and strategies moving forward. And the updated policy came to the board for final approval on June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. There's been some questions on the approval date, um, that it came at the beginning of summer. And maybe that it was put in when people wouldn't notice. Um, this was strategically added during the summer. Because once the board approves a policy, it becomes the policy the next day. And we knew at the end of the school year with all of the activities that were already in place, we didn't have the capacity. Um, to change the transportation at the very end of the school year. So that's why it came back for final approval in June. Our objective at Petaluma City Schools aims to fully support the transportation needs of all school related activities. Ensuring that every student receives free and safe transportation. So um, one of, another piece of confusion that is, this is a district policy. For all field trips at the primary and secondary levels. This is not just for athletics. Why was the, why were the changes made um to align with the district's mission? To ease the burden on parents. Um, we were getting a lot of information from. Parents having a hard time needing to leave work early to drive their students to athletic um events. Or parents and students who are responsible for finding their own ride to events, making it very difficult for some of our. Student athletes to find transportation. Um, we're looking to ensure safer transportation. The buses can provide a safer mode of transportation compared to parent and student car driving. Excuse me, student driven car pulls. Um, we are looking to promote equity for all of our students. Using pub, our district transportation provides equal access to all of our students. And support consistency. We're looking to standardize transportation for all of our activities. Avoiding inconsistencies and last minute arrangements of parent driven car pulls. I think this was one of the, the pieces that brought up the initial transfer, uh, excuse me, the initial policy. When we were talking about athletics as a whole. The monitor and budgeting, um, that we will continue to have close collaboration. Between the business department and site principals to monitor the actual cost of the program. I think one of the pieces that, um, the timing of this where we discussed it. We had our July one budget at our June meeting and then this was implemented over the summer. For this first year, what we were looking to do was to subsidize the costs. Um, a lot of our parent teacher organizations, um, booster clubs, other athletic teams. Have been fundraising for, for years to provide transportation for field trips and athletics. So the goal in this year was to not fully fund it. It was to offset the cost to make sure that we could offer it to everyone. While we work on a long term plan and the sustainability of what this looks like for the district. One of the reasons, um, we implemented it this way by giving sites individual, individual pockets of. Amounts of monies is that an open ended, the district will pay for all field trips. That could cost hundreds of thousands of dollars without parameters. So what we did was we tied it to a dollar amount for site administration with letting them know that, you know. If more needs arise to have the conversation with us, this is something that we did at the secondary level in previous years. So we just increased the amount of money we offered this year. I think one of the things that we can look at doing in the future, rather than allocating a specific. Dollar amount, we could say, you know, the district will provide transportation for. This many cross country events, this many tennis, this many football and look at it differently. Um, what we didn't want it to be was just an, a blank checkbook.
Sorry, this, so that is, was my misunderstanding then. So the message now, the message is. Not to stop fundraising at the moment until we, uh, until we stabilize and, and figure out what a year's cost is.
Yeah. So I think on our, that was the message that we've been giving out. Like I, myself, my department has been giving out the entire time is, was my understanding. That we were subsidizing or supplementing the differences, um, until we could. Because the fundraising had always been happening. So, but to. Until we could, because the fundraising had always been happening. So, but to. And also going back to the objective of a, um, free.
Yeah.
Education fundraising does not make it free. And I think that that's where some of the, the differences were her, were. Is that the information that was included in the budget and that we were giving out to site administration was. We will help you get there. How do we make this happen in year one? Like I said, I, I know, but when we first started discussing this, it was first centered around trans, transportation. Or excuse me, athletics as a whole. I think transportation was one piece of it. It was the cost of uni, uniforms, officials and all of that. And it slowly transpired into this transportation piece where. We kind of, um, we're still working on the cost analysis for athletics, but the transportation piece of it became. More emergent and that was our understanding of what we were looking for in this year. And how to put larger parameters around the funding.
I mean, I always understood that we were still donating since I already wrote my check, but. Yeah, I think also because there's been, like, I've been a parent in this district since twenty seventeen. Did the hundred and fifty dollars suggested donation for every single sport for all of my kids for the last seven years. And we've just been told different things that the money's going to. It's going to refs. It's going to transportation. But then there were not buses provided or we're still having, I mean, both of our daughters play tennis, had to buy our own uniforms. And so it just got to be, I mean, when I look at the, um, at the dashboard, CASA is at fifty percent. Um, socio economically disadvantaged students, Petaluma High is at forty percent. So if we're truly providing, like you quoted in the paper, a free public education. And then we're asking folks to pay for these things that are part of the school experience. Yeah, I don't know. How do we make it so it's more accessible for everyone? To a point, because then I'm hearing from like some of my kids' coaches that they have thousands of dollars in their accounts. Why isn't it being used to either buy those uniforms or to help pay for transportation? So I guess I had always thought of it as a shared cost, not necessarily us hundred percent. So. So all I say, I'm glad that you're clearing some of this up. So.
So then for the, so are you suggesting that, so I'm confused about the continuing of the fundraising. Um, so, you know, to that point that. You know, where, where is it going to go? Did, are you thinking about having something in a policy that would? Uh, say that this is to go to transportation or, you know, and then fundraise for, um. You know, uniforms and equipment and things like that. And the other piece of that is, um, kind of like some sports can raise a lot more money. I think that came up. From, from our, um, parents and, and coaches than other sports. And, and so there seems to be an inequity in terms of how the funding is going. And so I'm just trying to figure out. What's the most equitable and practical and, um, you know, uh, easy to understand? Because it was definitely not, not understood and even by me. So.
So the piece about, um, earmarking specific, specific funds at the booster or that the. Parent donation, s- sports teams, levels, that is not something that, um. Us at the district level have any. Or have not really had any conversations about, um, you know, not like booster clubs and stuff. They have rules and bylaws. They have to follow in A S B and we're involved in that piece of it, but telling them, um. Where they need to put those dollars is not something that, um, this has really been happening, I believe. Even historically from the district office. As for the, the funding piece, and I think that was one of the reasons for giving the pot. The, the allocation to the site administrators because they know which teams. Need help with transportation costs. You know, they dealt with it last year. We gave them allocations. Um, some teams have larger and they're involved in the athletics and the boosters piece. So they see the whole picture of how much fundraising is going on. That's. So that was why we did it as an allocation and not a per sport initially, hoping that, um. That would help because football, maybe, um, Petaluma High School, I bought cute little cards. And you know, they, when they came to my door, the football players, um, were like, were raising money for. Transfer for buses, for uni, and he, they listed all of the things that were going on. But I do, I coached cross country for four years at the high school level and know that when. They're smaller teams, you know, some, some teams have twenty kids on it. You're not going to have the same impact for fundraising that you will of football. To, I don't even know how many students are on like, oh, uh, yeah, I was going to say on a football team. So that was why we were leaving that piece up to, um, for the site discretion. For, at the discretion of the site administrator, which, um, maybe wasn't clear enough.
Well, also send an expectation for every parent who puts their kids in football. Hey, your kid's on the football team, so you have to raise money. But if your kid's on the cross country team, you don't. So even that, it's. But back to what you said, I don't know if you're going to get to it later about the budgets for each sport. I know we've been asking for a few years just to know. What each team has in their accounts, because again, parents have been donating for a long time. And don't know what the money's being spent on when it's being donated to the team. So if you're asking for the hundred and fifty dollars suggested donation through RevTrack and then there's an additional fundraiser, how much money is left? Should we expect for it to be spent on uniforms? Should we expect for it to be spent on transportation? Yeah, I, should we expect for it to be spent? So it's like if I donate for like my two kids who graduated two years ago. Is Jasmine, who's a junior now, gonna get that money? Or is it going to be Jalen, who's in seventh grade now, when she gets to Casa? So it's like, I know we talked about this year's dollars for this year's students as well.
Oh no, I was going to say, we have, um, I have requested, um, the account balances. For the athletic teams at the high schools. I have not received those yet, but I will follow up to answer that. And I think if you make a good point, um, even so, anytime somebody is fundraising under the name of the school district. So P T A, a booster club, they are not part of the district, but they are affiliated with the district. They really should be following the same rules that are written in board policy and ed code. And one of the things is with grants and donations specifically, if I'm a sixth grade parent. And my child is going on the sixth grade trip and I donate two hundred dollars. At the end of the year, say that everybody donated a little extra just in case and that amount wasn't needed. And there's a balance of three thousand dollars. The, those funds were for that class. They should be transferred to the seventh, those students at seventh grade. And that's really how we should be looking at athletic funds too, that they, if it's meant, if you're donating for your own child, that they stay. With your child unless there's a project, because like the, um, CASA. Excuse me, varsity boys. Baseball team has been saving up for a capital facilities projects and that, that takes years to save up for. So a lot of, um, booster clubs have bylaws written in saying that for capital projects. Or for uniforms are extremely expensive, you know, most teams can't buy them. Um, but needing to have a plan, a three year plan and really how the funds are supposed to be spent. When our student athletes and family members and people are going out and asking for donations. For our athletics, people are donating with the expectation that they are being spent. So that is something that, um, probably we should look at larger, like what? What is the goal of the district with our outside partners? Um, how they support the school, the district? But how can we also support them? Well, one of the ways we could support them is by giving them clear guidelines. Of what our expectations are and, um, things like that. So that is definitely something we could work on for that piece of it. Um, one of, this is a snippet of the board policy that we updated. And, um, I wanted to add it today because I think that maybe we need to change the language a little bit. It, the way, depending on where you pause, people are reading it extremely differently. So the intent is that the superintendent, so I think we need to change the language around like the superintendent. Or designee, um, may authorize the students by private vehicle. Within, like, I think we need to move the within twenty two miles or start with within twenty two miles of Petaluma. The superintendent or designee, because the way people were reading this was that, is that, um. You, your driver's license has to be within twenty two miles. So, um, yeah. So I think that that definitely needs to, will move the within twenty two miles.
Can you also add that that's, it, because it's not clear there. That it is for, uh, transportation of students to. You know, a, a game or, or a field trip, uh, within twenty two miles of Petaluma. It's very badly written. And so, you know, it's just kind of like, so where are they getting the idea that they can only? Drive their, uh, student, uh, within twenty two miles of Petaluma? Because that's not clear in, in that pol, in that paragraph. I mean, they can't drive, okay, so they can drive them within twenty two miles, but does that mean? It wasn't clear to me that that meant that they could not drive a, a carpool of students. Past twenty two miles. I mean, it just. I know, but it's not clear there.
I agree. I mean, that's C S P A language, so we can totally.
I'm not saying that that isn't what we wanted. It's just.
So this piece is by, it, the bullet is transportation pipe by private vehicle. Right below that is district transportation. So I did also take this. I only took one little snippet, but we can. Add to the sentence.
The other piece that I didn't find there and maybe it could very well be there is that they could not drive anybody else's. Child, that they could only drive their own. I couldn't find that in the policy.
So.
I mean, that was what we heard several times from.
Yeah, so.
Parents.
The policy is within twenty two miles, you can drive. If you're signed up as a private driver, you can drive your student and however many you can fit in the seat. Outside of that. Outside of that, everybody takes district, uh, and I will touch on this later, but. You take the district transportation. The only thing to that is. Um, and I think, and like you said, this is CSBA language. It does say um. With a permission slip, and I think that that needs to be changed because it's not a permission slip that. People need to sign in order to drive there. You can drive your own child to the event. But you're signing a waiver because if you are taking, say, I'm going to take my daughter to the football. Cross-country meet and I'm checking her out of school to drive her. I've now legally signed her out of school. She is no longer. In attendance at school. So we don't want them to sign their students out. Then they would be absent and absent and we likely. Have rules about how many periods you can miss. So what it is, is by signing the waiver, they are, they can take their. Child and that piece of it is for. Claiming ADA in attendance. It's. Kind of, but I think it does, and there is language that says um. Permission slip and that does feel like. So I think we were working on changing that language too.
So then are we in agreement that we do not want to have carpools at all to any games? Beyond twenty-two miles?
I mean, that's what we talked about last spring, yeah.
But, but then, well, I do, but the thing that I. Yeah, but then we're not providing. For free transportation. So we have a. You know, a, a, a rule. So there's no option. So they have to pay, right?
That was my understanding of the request of the board. We can definitely, I mean, we closed out last year's books. We. Will be having first interim in December. That is something that can actually be updated at any time.
Wait, I'm sorry. Can you ask that again or clarify what you were?
Saying?
So I guess what I'm saying is that um, it feels like um. That in, if, if it. That certain sports or maybe um, even, even with large sports that, that we, we are not providing, we're subsidizing. It's not a full payment so that there's no option for parents to. Uh, to carpool and take students other than, and so they have to be on the buses. And hopefully our buses. Right?
Or vans or.
Yeah, that they have to pay for. So the charters are much more expensive than if they are our own uh, bus drivers, correct?
Are you asking someone wants to drive their own child?
And a couple of other ones.
Only if it's within the twenty-two.
Only if it's within. We are to provide them, they, they have to take the buses, but that also means that they have to, it has to be. Uh, fundraised for. Because there's not enough money.
Come from the RevTrack, the fundraising, the district allocation, the site allocation.
Right, right.
Point is to take the burden off of parents. Cause like that, one of those first slides Amanda was saying. Not everyone can get off early from work. There was not always the um, the permission or the, the driving.
Right. So the, the burden isn't necessarily the financial burden. It's all the other things along with.
I mean, so many parents were driving kids and no one was keeping track of who was in what car. Parents didn't know who was driving their child.
Or if they had even filled out.
Yeah, that if they were.
The license.
If they had their update.
Cancelled at the last minute too, right?
Right. So that, I mean, those are all the reasons why we wanted to try and address this in the first place, admittedly and perfectly, but. There were, there were like a lot of, yeah.
I was just clarifying.
Also, I started with the objective of our long-term goal, Mitch, maybe. Was not. That, I, yeah, so, yeah, so that, that is our goal. How we get there and what that looks. Like is really a bigger conversation because um. Right now, we allow for fundraising. We allow for all of these things. Those policies haven't changed. So. This is also a situation where maybe one of our policies doesn't. Means we want to discuss some of the other policies that we have district-wide.
Well, and the transparency too. So if you're donating money, you know, it's going towards. I mean, the fact that we still don't know what's in each individual sports team's accounts.
When, we've been asking for years, like since before Amanda got here. Amanda's not the first CBO to ask for it. All right. So some of the questions that we have received was um. Can parents drive their own child, their own child? Yes, they can. Um, how was the twenty-two mile radius determined? When we first brought this to one of the first conversations, we were at twenty miles and then we changed it to twenty-two. Um, the difference was some of the places where you could drive on the freeway versus highway, the. High, like the highway thirty-seven. Um, does this policy apply to elementary field trips? Yes, it does. And I think because we so often talk about athletics. That got lost in the shuffle a little. Um, we sent a communication out to um, through Parent Square. And also it was in the paper and these are just some of the concern, the questions and concerns that we received from that communication. Um, how to fundraise for out-of-town to events, um. Lack of communication on policy changes. I think one of the things that we could do differently is, as this was a district. Ch- a district initiative or a district changed policy. Um, we could have used Parent Square, specifically myself or. My department sent out a communication to the parents and the community, community with the policy changes. I think that that. Some of it gets lost in translation where we, the decision is made here, we then it. Reiterated at meetings and the trickle-down effect. So I think moving forward, maybe sending out communication. Um, there are also concerns that this could reduce field trip opportunities um. With the increased costs and limited availability. I will say that um, the transportation department has not had to turn. Has not turned down any requests and. I believe all of them have been done through in-house. So, so far, so good. The other piece that we have been looking at too is purchasing. A couple, uh, for more used vans that could be earmarked specifically for. Athletics and field trips and having in that case, the coaches would be the parent, the. Individuals responsible for driving those because it's, our policy is district-driven. By district employees, um, so that for, specifically for the high schools to help them. Our vans that we have now are. All currently being used for our home-to-school routes. Um, they are able to use them on the weekends. Um, the caveat to that is our electric vans do only get. A hundred and forty miles um, on a charge. So it's looking at for longer distances away. What does that look like? There are charging stations and everything. It's just a new way um, of doing it and the transportation department is working on. A policy on what that looks like. The vans that are being loaned out luckily are going to Sacramento, so they will make it on their. Voyage trip, I, I believe this weekend. Um, and then. Um, the, another question and concerns that came up are the impact on student schedules and. Academics and extend, extended wait times for students. One of the reasons why this came about is that um. The, there was a trip scheduled at Kennelworth Junior High where some, the person scheduling the trip was not. I do not remember this part, aware of the new policy and Petaluma Junior already. Had a bus scheduled for a different sport and they were going to the same place. So Kennelworth. Was able to join the Petaluma Junior bus, but they did have to leave. It did extend the time. So um, one of the. Schools, they were out of class longer in order to accommodate that. Um, but that was in a situation where we found out the day before. That there was no transportation. So I don't know that that will, would even be the norm, but it did happen. Um, and then the, obviously, we're all confused about the funding allocation. So, so, so was the community.
Can you, yeah, uh, maybe you can walk me through the me- the financial mechanics of, of funding transportation on a trip. So, you know, you have, but uh, for the, for the high schools as one example, you have. Forty thousand dollar fund supplement. And you have uh, you know, their own fundraising that's being banked. And uh, you know, so far, the, the needs, the demands on transportation are being met in-house with our drivers and our buses. What? So when a team, you know, uh, books, uh, our drivers, our buses for a trip. Is there, are we charging them or, yeah, explain that.
So, yeah, so um, transportation is a restricted resource. So when we receive, we have our transportation department and our allocation. Is for home-to-school or school-to-school transportation specifically. And it's owned resource similar to special ed. So any, or food service. So anything that happens outside of that home-to-school route cannot be charged to that resource. So what we have to do is we calculate the, what the buses cost per mile, which is five dollars per mile. And then the driver's time, including statutory benefits and depending on the length of the trip. That, there's, it's often overtime. So um, it's five dollars per mile plus the cost of the driver. That is the piece that cannot be charged to the restricted resource. And needs to be allocated for somewhere specifically our general fund, our unrestricted fund. So in part of um, what happens after the trip is made and so are. Generally, our buses for a whole day are roughly six to eight hundred dollars, um, depending on. And then um, charters are a thousand to twelve hundred. That's what. They were on average costing last year. So um, the transportation department invoices either the site, the district, the team. For the cost and then essentially what happens is a transfer is made within the business department. Um, removing where those, the driver was paid in the miles from the restricted and that. Amount is transferred into the general fund. Is that what?
Okay.
Okay, so some key issues for resolution is clarifying funding distribution, which. We've talked a little bit about. Maybe there's some more thoughts on that. Um. What are the academic impacts if students do need to leave um, schools sooner? Um, re-transportation reliability. So far, we have been lucky. We do have two diesel buses and the rest of our buses are an electric fleet. So. There is that um, when scheduling transportation, who's going where, they need to be extra mindful of. And then the goal is to uh, reevaluate and give feedback after taking all of. Um, people's questions and concerns in this discussion. And really looking at the true impacts and um, where we can go from there.
I have a really quick question. Um, so it says like students and children on the language for it. Does that mean like? If you're a senior who's eighteen, can you drive yourself or do you have to be in the buses outside of twenty-two miles?
So that's a great question. As a student driver, you can actually only drive yourself within Petaluma. So you um, cannot even drive yourself to. What's close, uh. So, yeah, so um, and that is by, you do, parents do have to give permission for that.
And that was in the old policy too, I think, right?
Yes, that's, that is an ed code.
Okay.
And then just to any, any more discussion or questions or any further direction you can. Offer?
No, uh, just reflection. Uh, you know, I think uh, this. Uh, you know, I think the feedback we got from the community in the last month. Uh, you know, reflects a breakdown in. Uh, you know, how. What uh, us as a board understood from uh, district staff on what our capacities are. And then secondly, communication to our stakeholder groups uh, who need, who rely on transportation. You know, our, I, I think our board's objectives or my objective as a board member is to uh, to seek. Public subsidy of all of our transportation needs so that our education is really free. And that there are no barriers to participation in any of our extracurricular activities or anything else. Um, and that's, I don't think that's a really revolutionary thing to ask for. I think that's something that we should be gunning for. Uh, that should be the normal. Uh, in my opinion, but we're not there and I, you know, I get that. Uh, it's gonna take an extended ti- amount of time to find the um. The sustainable financial mechanisms to make this work. But yeah, I wanna, I would like to ask the district to help us find that. Uh, and, and transportation, by the way, is just one piece of the pay-to-play game that we see. In public education. It's all of my daughters, you know, it's gonna pay fifty bucks to go to a school dance. Uh, Casa Grande next, this month. That's, that's a huge barrier for a lot of families. That's. For, for a, a memory that, you know, I think all of our kids should, should have the opportunity to make. So, uh, anyway. Uh, I appreciate the, the feedback and the criticisms we've had in the last month because it's gonna make us better, but I want us to move forward. I would like us to move forward to try to find that mechanism where we are reducing the burden on the parent and the family to. To find transportation um, uh, funding and, and, and um. Uh, logistics. And to put that on, on um, on the district. Think, you know, I'm old enough to, to remember where that was normal. That was normal.
There's also um. The, when you talked about like the issues that came up, it sounds like there was a communication piece with the coaches as well. Um, sounds like a lot of the coaches didn't, were not informed of the policy. So. Um, can you tell us what the typical means is for communicating, for communicating out these types of. Um, things and then what the process was over the summer in terms of that?
Yeah. So um, generally, things are discussed here in a public board meeting and then. Um, we discuss them if there's further clarification as, as cabinet and then. We have K-12 admin meetings, which includes our site administrators and that is generally. Where information is given. Um, with the changes in this policy as we knew it was coming. The amounts, the given to each site were part of the site discretionary, discretionary allocations. So they were discussed then. Um, we had an admin meeting where I went over the presentation. That was here at the board meeting that talked about the changes on August first. And um, I feel like we, we've been talking about transportation for so much, I'm, for so long that there could be other times. Um, I think the missing piece to this is because this was such a big policy. Change that it probably would have been helpful if I would have gone to the coaches' meeting in case there were any questions.
And then, oh, go for it.
Just circling back to the, the student drivers thing. So for all drivers of all ages, do we have to get permission to? Like, like a signed contract with parents?
So for you to drive yourself?
Yeah.
Yes. So a parent does sign a, a waiver or a permission slip that allows their student to drive only themselves.
Okay.
For fund, like legally are, I mean, I think we're allowed to fund.
For fund, like legally are, I mean, I think we're allowed to fundraise as a district. With, with what time and I, I don't know about that, but, um. Is it tax deductible if, for example, we got twenty thousand dollars from Friedman's or something and put their logo somewhere? A, is any of that legal and B, is it tax deductible? Cause we're not a five O and C three.
Yeah, so I am not an accountant. I cannot give tax advice, but. You can make a contribution, um, I believe it's two hundred dollars per individual. That individuals can determine if they would like to write it off. We do not, like, as you said, we are not a nonprofit. Um, with that being said, we do accept donations. I do know it, like, we have. Items within the district signage and stuff like that, that has been donated by local organizations. Um, that have essentially paid for the cost of, um.
Oh my gosh, I'm so sorry. For the football. Oh, that, yeah, the.
Yeah, what are they called?
The scoreboards, scoreboards. There we go. It took us all a second.
I know, I'm like, now I know who not to ask. Yeah, things like that. So it's not, um. That, this is something we've also were, have been discussing on the building wise. So there's no, there's, there aren't things that prohibit it. One of the thing, the questions that come up often because PTAs and boosters donate. Um, and have looked at doing the sponsorships is we do live in, um, what some would call wine country. So, and there are a lot of, um. Places that would happily donate, but they do not, the names. Their names specifically do not align with, um.
If we wouldn't let a student wear their logo or name on a T-shirt, we probably shouldn't.
Put it on.
Flap it on us.
Yeah, yeah, but that is definitely something we could look at doing if people wanted to. Fund a van or fund. A bus and things like that, um. A lot of, i- it's not un- uncommon for districts to do that and, um, I. A thousand percent agree. I, like, as I said, I was a coach of an unfunded sport, um, that it would be wonderful to offer. Um, free everything to all students and remove all barriers. But, um, and Tony, not to. To give you the mic, but, um, the difference between, um, the free and appropriate education, which takes. Place through the instructional day and extracurricular activities. Um, there are some differences. So I, I just wanna say that and maybe Tony wants to add because I, I don't want anybody. Listening in thinking that we're charging people for education. So.
If, if I may, I would like to just, um. Reflect on what the discussion has been here and also ask for direction as we move forward. What I heard you say basically is that ultimately, uh, you would like to be able to fund. Uh, all, uh, transportation related, uh, activities. Within the district's budget, that's one, but also in the meantime, where we are for this academic year. Is, um, we would like to continue in a sense as it was. With the support from the different teams and the funds that they have raised and accumulated. To also support education, support the transportation. Is that what we're saying? Uh, in addition to that, would you like us to bring back the? The policy, the transportation policy with some of the changes that were discussed here? Anything else? How can we proceed to kind of move forward on this issue?
With that second part, Esmeralda, um, you know, with the continued. Uh, fundraising in, in addition to the district's, um, financial support. With the explicit, uh, use of, I, I think what, what might be a compromise at this point is. District transportation first kind of policy, you know, when our vehicles are available or drivers are available. This should be the default and it's when, or the, I mean, I'm just, I'm just throwing something out here, so please chime in, but. Uh, it's, you know, in the, i- in so far, it sounds like we have been able to meet that demand, but. Somewhere down the line, we might not be able to. Someone just wrote me an email about. If we had gone to triple overtime, we would have gone past the drivers, a lot of time of driving and that, you know, created another issue. But anyway, the point being, uh. Our own capacity first and then, you know, we can think about. If those capacities are exceeded, then what? Uh, I mean, I, I can't think second would be, uh, vendor. Vendor is very expensive, but I. That's where I'm standing is vendor second and, you know, parent is like last, last choice, like. That's where I'm sitting, but, but this is discussion here.
Can I?
Yeah, please.
Follow, okay, so on that, so in order to do that, this, the board policy would need to be amended or else. Every time we allow parent drivers, we're not following our current board policy. Who would make the determination on if parents could drive? Would be my, my first question and to touch on that, there are rules for hours that, um. Drivers can drive, but we do have contingencies in place. So we have standby driver mechanics on call. With buses that know if a game or something is not done by a certain time. Um, that they will then go there. And also there are allowable reasons for drivers to be over their time. It, it doesn't impact that day. It impacts. Their routes the following day. So I know that was a concern, but that has been handled internally.
And I think we had previously, so last school year, we had asked for the default to be the district vehicle. But it still wasn't. And so we were still placing that burden on families and students and again, not collecting like the proper waivers. Insurance and all of that. So it also was starting to become a liability issue as well as an access issue. Um. And I think to clarify, I don't think we were saying that, um. Like this is part of the instructional school day, but it does enhance the school experience and we have talked about pay to play. You know, if you can't get off work, if you can't afford the uniform, you can't get the track spikes. If you can't do all those things. You may opt out of, um, participating in a sport or an extracurricular. So, yeah, I agree that the district vehicle should be the default vehicle. But I don't know if I wanna rewrite the policy to state that.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think. The eight of us are in the position to, to rewrite the policy. I mean, we really need to lean on the district. Staff to find the, the mechanisms that make it practical for us to pursue the goal. Of publicly provided transportation to these kinds of extracurricular activities. And if that has to be phased over time, then that's what it's gonna have to be, but. Um, you know, the eight of us don't know all the, all the aspects, all the contingencies that we have to be thinking about.
And I do believe, correct me if I'm wrong, we last year allocated an extra fifty thousand because we did have, um, the booster clubs come to us. Asking for more money towards sports. Is that correct?
Yes, to cover, um, like some officiating and some of the legal fees.
Thank you. One more comment. I also foresee, and I would recommend that perhaps, you know, in the spring, you once again revisit this issue. And look at it and move forward and you may wanna need, need to kind of bring it back. At least once or twice for the year. So you can keep monitoring in a sense where you are, uh, how close you are to meeting your goal.
I do think we do need to clean up the language sooner than later though, for the confusion parts. If people are still confused about what twenty-two miles means on their driver's license versus from the center of Petaluma. I don't know, my house, probably. I live right by the freeway. I'm just saying, I'm not like, but probably.
I thought that when Matthew was doing the calculation, it was from like whatever school to. Like Napa. And like made that like the cutoff because those games, you know, are harder to get to the Napa, the American Canyon. Windsor, et cetera.
I would like to ask our student, uh, board members if you have any reflections on, um, you know, peers. Uh, and, and the impact of, you know, what we're discussing, um, fundraising for athletics. Um, costs for clubs, any, anything like that. If, if you are, what's the? What's the, um, view from the students in, in terms of? You know, do you, do it, does any, do you, have you seen it be a barrier or is that not an issue or, or, or what?
I mean, I, I feel like it's gonna be a little weird, um, especially for the people that live out in Santa Rosa. Like past the, the twenty-two mile area. And for the people that wanna go, like, go home with those people or like, I don't know, whoever has plans. I mean, San Antonio isn't really affected by it because we don't have that many sports or sports at all to begin with. But it's, I don't know, it's a little gray area, you know?
Daniel, are you talking about, um, like driving people to school like carpooling? Okay.
Um, I've just had a lot of people come to me like really confused and like upset because. Like their games have gotten either like canceled or their coaches aren't sure and then their coaches are kinda telling the kids like, we have to start fundraising. We don't know what to do and then like. All my, almost all my friends are on cheer and they're like, we can't go to our comp and. For comp season, we cannot go to our comp if we don't raise enough money to go, which is just really upsetting because they spend the whole season. Practicing for this one thing. So I don't know if that's true. That's just what obviously their coaches are telling them. So.
So how would they do it before?
That, I, that's a great question.
That I'm struggling to try to figure out.
Me too.
Yeah, cause I'm gonna.
Not like.
Is it, was it all through hair pools, carpools? But even if it was down in Southern California?
Yeah, so I, I mean, they're just all really concerned and that's. It's kind of hard to hear as someone who's like their best friends. They're practicing for it the whole year. It's just, yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that it is, this policy is just for field trip and athletics, not driving. Students to school. Yeah, sorry, I, I, you did ask that earlier and I did not answer it very clearly.
I mean, I'm not personally against parents driving other kids, but we saw that like. None of the systems we had in place were being followed even a little bit. And so I'm really worried that if we do open it back up, that. Like I wouldn't know what, whose car my stepkids are in. I don't know that they've even been cleared by the district. When's the last time they had a DUI? When's it like, did they? So, I, I'm not against, I, like, I would be, I would personally be fine phasing in. Parents carpooling because there are parents that have time. There are parents that have time and energy to, to drive. Uh, but I do want to center the district providing transportation whenever possible, um. Cause yeah, like when I was on academic decathlon, that was my sport at Casa, um. You know, we drove in Mr. Pillsbury's super sketchy old van that probably was not clear to drive. He's not sketchy, just the van. Um, and. So like that probably wasn't the best system, but it, I don't know that all of us nerds would have been able to fundraise money either. I don't know if the district had money. I don't know any of that, but that's, um. I just worry about the like liability and the safety side of it. Um, and then I do worry about. If that does come back into play, even if everyone's very safe and all the liability is covered, that parents are gonna feel pressured or coerced. Or not have time to take off to drive their kids and that's what this. Comes back to. So for me personally, I'm not against phasing in guardians being drivers. If they're over twenty-one, if they have a clean driving record, if they give us all their, um. Proof of insurance and all those things regular, but that means that athletics, co- athletics directors and coaches are gonna have to do their jobs and wrangle that. So are athletic directors and coaches committed to doing that? Cause they, as, as far as I can tell, they weren't doing that before and that's not a question anyone here. Can answer. So I'm not act, it's a rhetorical question. It's a rhetorical device. That's what I'm thinking about.
I agree. I think, um, I can remember that, you know, the conversations around the fact that the, some of the breakdown. Uh, what, not particularly this year, but when we were discussing about the new policy. That was that these kinds of, uh, waivers, all of these things, that the whole information about the driver. Where did it go? And were people, who was monitoring it? I don't know whether we wanna put that in the policy. It's like. That this is, this is what it is. This is, you cannot do it unless you have this on file and then who's gonna be responsible for that? Information.
So that was in the old policy and it's still the policy.
But it wasn't being followed.
Within, so it's still the policy within twenty-two miles. So all of those things.
But if we wanted to like phase in for something, for special events, maybe. Where it's something like that, where it's a special event, it's a convention.
Some districts, what they do is they allow, they don't, there are many districts in California that do not allow private drivers. At all. That's the CSBA policy is one or the other. We changed that piece of it. But what some districts do is they allow, um, in excess of a hundred miles or for overnight trips. And they have certain stipulations that are like, not only are you cleared as a, uh, the driver, but you're cleared as. A volunteer, a school volunteer. So for things like cheerleading and overnight, I know, um, if. This could become an issue, if any of the teams make it to state competitions and things like that. So there's also. That piece of it that. You allow for cer- circum- certain special circumstances that would need a, a policy change though.
Okay, do we need a study session? Like that's what I'm starting to think with athletic directors, coaches, families to just. Hammer out some of this policy, not just transportation, but.
Yeah, I do think that the athletic directors have to be brought into it and the principals, if they're gonna be. Part of the hierarchy of this information.
They were all invited to the first two times we discussed it.
Oh, I know.
We don't know if they'll come the next time, but then also I wanna hear from the Title One families as well.
Right? I mean, I'm trying to think of timing sometime in October, cause once we get into November, December, that's just not. And I feel like pushing it to January is also not a good idea and not. Yes, I'd rather, but I'd rather address it before we run out of money, you know what I'm saying?
Just to remind you that there is an item on the agenda where we're asking the board to consider having a study session for the budget.
Right.
And the seven period days, so.
Well, what do you all think? Do you'd you rather just direct staff to update policy or have a? Or another discussion at? Another board meeting or do a study session or?
But maybe the, this, I don't know whether this is the way we should do. I'm just thinking that maybe the staff could look at the policy and what we've been talking about. And then at the next meeting, bring it forward and then if it looks like it's still needs clarification. Um, then have a study session, but I don't think we can do it in October.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that? That remains the twenty-two miles or would that be adding? If district vehicle and charter is not accessible to allow for parent drivers?
Isn't that what the second part of the policy saying? May authorize the use of district vehicles contract to provide or arrange transportation by the use of other vehicles. So does that just need to be clarified further? Cause that's basically what it already says.
What it's saying, what the policy is saying is that the superintendent or designate. Has the authority to not allow within the twenty-two miles. So if there's an issue, it's not that. It's not the other way around. It's to say, even if it was fifteen miles away and there was an issue with a parent driver to remove that. So we would need to specifically.
I would also recommend that, um, we consider basically retracing our steps and actually going to the sites and inviting the. Coaches and everybody else's who may be interested in having input on some of the revisions to actually provide that. But I think it's in general, as you know, very difficult for the public as well as for staff to actually come. To the board meeting and provide you with that input. So just some ideas, I know it will add a lot more. and provide you with that input. So just some ideas, I know it will add a lot more work. But we may need to do that just so next time we bring you that policy with revisions. We know that the stakeholders have had that input.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's right. And I, I'm struggling to answer Amanda's question because I don't think we have all the data that we need to, to know. And I think that's what, what is needed now is, um, you know, a, a good, a good um, accounting of the, you know, and an academic year's demand on transportation services. And how does that compare to the capacity of what we have in vehicles and drivers? And, and how much of it would have to be subsidized with vans? And would there be any excess demand beyond that that might need parent drivers or or other things? I think that's what we're missing is those data, which I, I thought, I mistakenly thought we did.
Previously, last year and the year before. I think I would be more inclined to agree with that if we actually got all the voices in the room. And it sounds like previously we had done the invitations to folks. Cuz we know if people can't come, they email us. Um, there's other ways to make voices heard. But, I mean, I, I don't know how else to invite people in other than what we've done before.
So it sounds like we need a transporta- activity transportation audit of sorts. With knowing how much it costs, but I think we also need to know how much is in those rep track accounts.
Yeah.
Like we can't make informed decisions not knowing that money.
So we did calculate amounts. We looked at what sports teams had provided last year, the increase. And like I said earlier, that was to subsidize. So it was all inclusive. It wasn't, I didn't. I promise I didn't just write down a number. But I'm happy to reach back out.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. So then when should we ask, when is fair to ask for the policy to come back? Should we give a few months?
Maybe, maybe before the end of the year.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, just, you know, like, yeah, it's gonna be a lot, so.
So would you like just in? For the meetings to happen?
Asking.
Would you like for the meetings to happen with site administrators and coaches? Would you like, um, kinda like we did with the pre-bond planning, the community meetings? Would you like a, a community meeting held at each?
I think a community meeting is important cuz I think like join us.
Yeah, we have to hear from the parents.
And I mean, those are still hard to attend for families, but if there's other ways we can do outreach.
Survey?
Yeah, there's always.
What do you think, Esmeralda? What, what's the most effective way?
I'm just going back again to the May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three board meeting where we did this as a response to I'm looking parents, coaches came to those meetings and said that this is what they wanted. There was issues related to transportation to athletic events and there was a safety issue. And then at that meeting, that's when we talked about allotting an extra seventy thousand actually for transportation. May twenty-twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. And so that's why then we did it for the last school year and then now here we are for this school year. So are we just gonna keep going around? I mean, we can, but like we continue to, um, react to the community. This is what the community saying they want. Okay, this is what the family say they want. Okay. This is what people are saying they want. This is our accountability. This is our lack of accountability. We can have another study session, that's fine. But then at what point are we gonna make a decision about a policy and stay with it? And then I, I hear like, I don't want the kids not being able to go to their competitions and things. Okay, so then let's say we tweak it for that. Who, and we've asked this again for the last year or two, who's gonna make sure we have the proper things on file, that we have license, insurance, registration? Cuz that was not happening. God forbid, something happened, a child goes down the competition in Disneyland and something happens. Someone didn't have the proper paperwork put in, um, or didn't have the proper clearance. I don't know. I know it's super expensive to drive buses down to Disneyland or whatever. So I understand wanting to make some changes, but at some point, I don't know. So I guess, do we start with going out to the sites and talking to folks and then decide on the study session or?
Yeah, I think a study session is back off the table now. I think we're, we're talking about, talking to the community more, getting concrete ideas to change if there needs to be changes to the policy.
I think we're leaning, I mean, I think we are needing the district's advice on here because we aren't the experts up here. We're, we're, we are the, we're meant to provide the direction but not the mechanics. And we, we need some, we need some, uh, 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 input here.
And just to add as to who should be responsible for ensuring in a sense that the paperwork has been completed and that the drivers have been vetted. Typically, most districts in a sense is at each side. Obviously, the principal ultimately uh has to work with whoever is organizing the, the activity and the trip outside those twenty-two miles. And then they said, well, I have this parent who, you know, or within the twenty-two miles, I'm sorry, I have this parent who can drive. Then they make the contact and say, this is the paperwork that you need to complete. And that paperwork ultimately can go to the business office in a sense, but it really comes via the principal. I don't know how this district has done it, but.
I mean.
What is the process that has?
We could verify it, but I, the, the business department does not have the.
No, no, it's just verifying it or submit it in, in a sense, or it can be kept in.
It is at the site level.
Yeah, it's at, that's at the site level. And the high schools is, yeah, I mean, it is coaches, activities director, administrator.
That, so this piece has, oh, this has always been the policy and this piece hasn't changed. I, okay. This isn't new.
Saying that the issue basically is that it has not been done.
Right.
It has not been followed.
Hasn't been followed. So how do we put teeth in this?
Well, that's the thing because the directives have been given, I mean, more than once. So I, I feel like that's how this, this came about was because the directive was given that these policies needed to be followed.
So the missing piece is enforcement, basically.
All right. Any other thoughts on the transportation? Update or policy changes? All right. Now moving on to comments from the public on special recognition reports presentation. So that's anything that's happened already tonight or non-agendized items. So, um, I'm gonna read the gov code information. If you wanna give a pu- public comment on any of those things, please fill out a periwinkle or lavender, what mauve, everyone has their own opinions on what color this is, um, paper and bring it up to Bree over here. Under government code section five four nine five four, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. Well, government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services and or employees. The district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items period. That is right now. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during discussion of those items. The board values public comments and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a five, three minute per person limit or twenty minute limit per subject matter. Commenters may not cede their time to others. So first up, we have Denise.
Hello, um, a lot was already talked about, so I appreciate that. I just wanna tell you, I appreciate like all the conversation around this, this transportation policy. Um, I have a senior at Casa Grande. He is a two varsity sport athlete. And I just really feel that this transportation policy really needed to be discussed with the key stakeholders, like you've mentioned, school admin, coaches, parents before it was implemented. Um, my son has never taken a bus in four years. They've gone all over the Bay Area. They've gone far beyond Vival. They've gone to San Francisco, the East Bay, Sacramento. Parents work together uh with the coaches to get the entire team there. No student on our teams have ever been left behind that I'm aware of. Um, I am all for buses. I think it's a great idea. I've always said if the district had the money to pay for the buses, then buses would be great, but I don't believe the district has enough money for this to happen, at least this year. But I think it's unfair to put this expense on the schools, the booster clubs, the coaches, the teams or the parents to fund this. And I feel like if the district really wants to enact this policy, then you need to fund it in its entirety. Giving schools forty thousand dollars for a year to pay for all teams' bus rides is not gonna cover it. Um, speaking on behalf of some of my coaches who've asked me to speak here tonight, I know the Casa Grande baseball program alone will need thirty buses this upcoming season because freshmen play on different days than JV and varsity. And many schools only have one ball field, so teams can't even share a bus. That's an estimated ten thousand dollars in bus expenses, which is one quarter of the allotted amount you're giving to Casa for the entire school year for all sports. We also wanna know why is it capped at twenty-two miles, knowing that four of the Vival teams are outside that radius? If we can't get a bus financially covered and parents aren't allowed to drive their own child, I am assuming you just want the teams to forfeit. Which will wreak havoc when it comes to playoffs, NCS, et cetera. Not to mention upsetting the athletes who have worked super hard to pay, to play to the best of their ability and represent their schools. Please also keep in mind that for some of these graduating seniors, they're really counting on college scholarships and they're hoping to make a college team. So if they have to forfeit a game because they can't afford a bus to that game and there's a scout there to watch them, that's gonna be heartbreaking. And my son wanted me to tell you tonight that he has two AP classes in both third and sixth period. He's not gonna be leaving school at two o'clock to ride on the freshman or the JV class, excuse me, bus and then sit there until his game starts at seven. School's too important to him. All three teams who are gonna have to share a bus won't be getting home till after ten o'clock. No coach, freshman, JV or senior parent that I have talked to wants that. We don't want our students leaving school any earlier than needed to miss important classes. So for me, the fact that there was seemed to be, there was no fiscal study conducted before this policy was put into place is really unacceptable. Please use this year to work with the key players, come together, go to the site councils like you've talked about. Come up with a plan that is financially sound, that you can implement maybe next year. Students are the number one priority in all of this, but I feel like the way this policy is written, the students will be hurt, not helped. Thanks.
Thank you, Denise. And next up, I have April.
Okay, real quick, before you start the timer, I'm a teacher myself. I teach uh at Santa Rosa City Schools. I've been there for almost twenty years.
Sorry, this is either part of your public comment or not.
Just give me a second. I've been here for two hours and ten minutes.
Right, we're gonna be here for a lot longer too. You have to respect the rules of the game.
And I'm also, my daughter goes to school in Pedluma. So I'm gonna be blasting through this real quick.
Totally.
So, ready, set, go.
Great.
Okay, cool. Thank you. All right. Again, my name is April and I am, I've been teaching for Santa Rosa City Schools for about twenty years. I'm passionate about my job, my students and my community here in San, in Sonoma County. And I was born and raised here and I attended public schools here. My daughter currently attends high school here in Pedluma. Um, I chose to send my children here and teach here in Sonoma County because this community is very dear to my heart. I'm speaking to you tonight regarding our ever-rising violence and safety in our local school districts and throughout schools across the coun- country. My hope is that I don't come across pointing fingers because I know that we all want our school communities to be safe and for students' learning environments to excel and thrive. What we know to be true is that students can't excel or thrive if they are in a flight, fight or flight or in a trauma state. I'm going through bullet points real quick. As parents and staff, we are notified weekly via ParentSquare regarding yet another threat to violence. Whether it be real or fake, it is a threat and it is triggering. In two thousand eight, when I started teaching for all the districts, all five high schools in Santa Rosa and had resource officers. Our resource officers worked closely and spent time mentoring, connecting and building relationships with students and staff. In two thousand eleven, I transferred to Elsie Allen, meeting two more officers. Both professionals assisted with de-escalation, were bilingual and bicultural, were respected by all of the school community. And the students looked up to them for advice and guidance. In June twenty twenty, our resort, our resource officers were removed as part of an effort to confront racial biases in the criminal justice system. March, I'm going through some very uncomfortable, sad things that happened. March twenty twenty-three, a student at Montgomery was brutally stabbed on campus and later died. October twenty twenty-three, death threats were written on a bathroom at Pedluma High. April twenty twenty-four, a naked woman covered in blood walked onto the Pedluma High School campus and into the gym, suffering major health crisis, marrying her blood. October twenty twenty-four, a fourteen-year-old boy was stabbed, a thirteen-year-old boy at Elsie Allen. These are campus circumstances I'm sure maybe you're familiar with and I'm sure there's many more. Our resource officers must be reinstated to secure the safety of all of our school campuses. From my personal perspective, I've had the privilege to work with, were very highly effective and valued to the entire school community. Uh, moving on, in closing, my worst fear is that something could happen to my daughter at her school or to any student or staff member here in our county. The safety and well-being of our students and staff should not be something we work towards, but more of a foundation that we need to safeguard the promise of our future. A quote my daughter shared at Casa Grande, "This districts are reactive and need to be proactive. Law enforcement needs to be present at all times, not just when a problem arises." Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, April. All right, we're gonna take a five-minute recess and I think Dave will put the time up for us. All right, I reconvene this meeting at eight eighteen. There we go. All right, everybody awake now? Good. Moving on to adoption and approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the agenda.
I move to adopt and approve the agenda.
Yeah, she already did it. Maddie, do you second?
To second it? Yes, second.
All right, all in favor of approve, um, we want, yeah. Can someone move to, uh, remove the, oh my god, what is it?
Fourteen, one, two.
Fourteen, two, one off the agenda, or table it till next meeting.
I move to remove. Item fourteen, two, one from the agenda.
Okay, all in favor of removing that from the agenda?
Aye.
All right, so now we're considering just approving the agenda as amended. So that just means we'll talk about everything that's still on the agenda except that item. All in favor?
Aye.
Any post, any abstention? All right, we have an agenda. So now we will report on activities and correspondence of school board members. Give me one second. Chrome decided to crash at some point. Our Google overlords are not my friend today. There we go. And it says I've been signed out. Are you kidding me? I just signed in. Board trustees did a lot, so I do want to actually report on this. It's been a, a busy, well, okay. Don't log me out, please. Don't log me out, please. All right, board trustees attended Kennelworth Junior High basketball games, footsteps to freedom events, the cell phone committee, the budget advisory committee, the woven stories ribbon cutting at Kennelworth, the Pedaluma Junior High Safe Routs to Schools principals meeting, the Grant School Safe Roots to Schools principals meeting, the continuous improvement committee, the professional development subcommittee of that committee, meeting with Deb Fox, the climate action director for the city of Pedaluma about the climate action resolution, a gender review, a CHIPPA meeting with Healthy Pedaluma, a meeting of the Alternative Ed Task Force, the Measure I Campaign Kickoff Event, a meeting of the Junior Commission on the Status of Women, and a fundraiser for Friends of the Pedaluma River. And that was just the grown-up board members. Student board members attended the Casa Grande Health Science Club Debate Club and Interact Club. At Pedaluma High, they attended float meetings for homecomings, started and had the first meeting of the TSA Club, which we heard about earlier, went to a Making Connections field trip for ASB, attended the cell phone committee meeting, had the homecoming rally, started planning a movie night for Pedaluma High freshmen. Our Casa board member also shared that at Casa, Little Women is coming along well for the drama department. ASB went to their Making Connections, but she said confections, but I think she meant Connections Conference, and met amazing people. The football and flag football teams have had exciting games with packed student sections, and the Casa's Hosa chapter is getting ready to attend the Washington Leadership Academy Conference in DC for future health professionals. Does anyone have any comment on any of the activities that they've done that they want to share with the, share with the class?
I just wanted to mention the, the CHIPPA Mental Health and Substance Abuse Work Group has started up again. I guess I, I missed the, the first one. I don't know, they were reorganizing it or something. But anyway, I just wanted to bring it forward that the Healthy Pedaluma, that, that most of the discussion was around a policy to ban cell phones. And so they're working on, you know, they, they're, they're, they're working on the, um, the Surgeon General's report and many other reports about the harm. And so I know we have a cell phone committee, and so they, they had written a letter that they presented to the CHIPPA committee to just kind of look at, review, see, see what needs to be changed, if anything. And so it was just a very interesting process, and I think they really want to support what our schools are doing in terms of, you know, this whole issue. It's just messy. So anyway, I wanted to let you know that that will probably be coming forward through the CHIPPA committee. There were lots of other things, but I will spare you.
I am a mentor for the Junior Commission on the Status of Women for Sonoma County, and I just wanted to say there are a lot of Casa and Pedaluma High students on that body, which is really exciting, and they are prepping to tackle some pretty, pretty big, pretty cool issues. So it's very exciting. Do either of you want to report on any of the activities you, you've done? You don't have to. Yeah. It's good info. All right, moving on to comments from the public on consent items. I have no cards in front of me. I see no public rushing the stage on consent items. So we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda by consolidated motion. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
All right, any questions or comments about any of the items on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none. I called.
Actually, I did. Sorry, I just wanted to, I just wanted to have it in front of me. This came up as well when we were talking about transportation and busing and just like the cost and, um, on different schools, like, um, what school is this? Grant is going on a field trip that costs $500 a student. And so it was brought up again, just again, like the inequities in terms of field trips. And I believe at one point we said that we would make sure that every school that wanted to go on a field trip was able to do so, and so I just wanted to reiterate that. So that, that was all. I didn't know if there was any other discussion or Amanda, something to say about that. Because again, it comes back to, you know, we've been talking about, Sheldon's been highlighting, it's 500 bucks. A lot of money for a sixth grade trip, you know? And so we start the.
Is it after Ed?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so of course, every kid wants to go, and I.
Well, I think it's a requirement.
No, you can say.
It used to be, didn't it? It was a science requirement?
I, I don't believe it was a requirement. Yeah.
But you know, like we're starting the donation request so early, and especially for something like this, I think just again, it just highlights and reiterates how much money and how often we're asking from families. I'm glad that these kids get to go and again, just highlights that piece. So that, that was all I wanted to say about it.
All right, I call the question, all in favor of the consent agenda, approving the consent agenda. Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Say no. Any abstain? I don't know, do a little dance? Nope, cool. Motion carries. Comments from the public on action items. I have no cards in front of me. If you would like to make a comment on an action item, please bring a card up to Bree in the next few seconds. All right, moving on to action items. First up, administration and human resources. So Esmeralda, are you taking these three? First, can I hear a motion to get more, get them all on the table? Can someone move to approve all three?
Can I move to approve all three? I move to approve 14.1.1, to approve 14.1.2, and to approve 14.1.3. Revised, uh, second reading revised administrative regulations on employee safety.
Somebody other than me has to second.
I'll second.
Thank you. All right, now Esmeralda, can you?
Yes, this comes from HR, and basically, uh, these administrative regulations describe the process for the implementation of the Workplace Violence Prevention Plan. And you will see that the first one is related to certificated personnel, second one is classified, and the last one is the administrative and supervisory personnel.
All right, any comments or questions on any of these three ARs? All right, I call the question, all in favor of approving all three ARs? Please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Say no. Any abstention? Do a dance. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make it happen. The motion carries unanimously, and we removed the CBOC's annual report. So moving on to Ed Services, can someone move either one or both of the resolutions in Ed Services?
I move to, um, approve action item 14.3.1, Resolution 2425-11, and also 14.3.2, Resolution 2425-12. Uh, the re, uh, the requirements of Ed Code, blah, 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 regarding sufficiency of textbooks or instructional materials for the 2425 school year.
A second.
All right, so Esmeralda, these are, no, these aren't yours. Never mind. You're like, what did I do? Tony, these are yours, but these came up last time.
Right, we just had to make some edits on there to reflect the current year.
Perfect. Does anyone have any questions or comments? That's, as far as I can tell, that's all that's changed from the last time, is that it's the right one. Okay, I call the question, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Say no. Anyone abstaining? Do a dance. All right, and Esmeralda, you're off the hook for now. Nothing for student services. So comments from the public on discussion or information items. If you have a public comment, please bring up the card. If not, we will move on to discussion and information items, starting with admin. First reading of our amended board policy about our vision, and we don't need to do any movements or anything.
Needs to be added to this policy. So that's for the vision. The next one has to do with philosophy. And you will also notice there that the changes are in red. Okay, and that basically has listed the core values that you have. And then, let's see. Then the next one basically is related to the goals for the school district. Same thing, you will notice that any changes and revisions are in red. And the last one has to do with non-discrimination in the district programs and activities. So this is the first read.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on any of these amended board policies?
Yeah, no, I, I, I didn't know we had policy, I mean, I knew we had those things, vision and philosophy and those things. I didn't realize they belonged in a policy, so I appreciate that that's been brought up. The third one in particular, goals for the district, you know, the, the high-level goals. I, I remember our study sessions that, that developed those, and you know, I think those are fairly stable. I mean, obviously, always up for, you know, revision, but they're fairly stable. But the objectives in each, you know, are meant to be revised every year. So for that one in particular, number, uh, item three, you know, on goals for the district, I wonder if we can add language that suggests, um, that they be revisited annually at the, at the goal-setting session typically in July, just so that we know, you know, that one, we expect that the, the goals are updated every year as we accomplish, you know, last year's goals.
Yeah.
Okay, we will do so.
Any other questions or comments? Cool. All right, moving on to business services. We're talking about a study session for the budget and bell schedule.
Yes, now that the union has voted on the seven-period bell schedule, we would like to schedule a study session to talk about the cost and the impacts on the budget.
Great.
Sometimes.
Yeah. Should we, are we trying to schedule that in this moment, or are we?
Yes, we're trying to find a date that works best for you. Also, what we could do is just provide you with three different dates and times, and then we can follow up with Bree and communicate with you and actually agree on a date. What would you like to, to do? Do you want to go through your calendars right now, or the?
I think three options and, um.
Okay.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we will do that then.
Can you remind me though, um, I mean, I remember we had a resolution last spring that said November 1 for a deadline. Uh, has that deadline been met by?
Yeah, when they voted, that was, yeah.
This doesn't have to happen.
No, no. It was, yeah. But yeah, that vote was a while ago.
Isn't there another one of December? Because of the scheduling, the master, you know, the signing up for classes in January, so.
Yeah, because we needed to be committed to doing it.
Right, and that's, that's done with, you know, you guys. But, um, yeah, but there was a deadline for that one too of December, something 15th maybe.
So then we want to do it before December 15th, which I think we probably want to do anyway, because, uh, yeah. Yes. All right, so yes, if you could, we could get three options or whatever works. Yes, and then we need to respond to Bree as soon as possible, myself included. All right, Ed Services, Tony.
Yeah, so this, um, um, wanted to bring forward a letter of intent. It's, it's, um, it's a document intended to confirm our commitment with the, with a new charter petition option for Valley Vista and Live Oak. As we look at where Valley Vista is currently with their enrollment, with, um, you know, what they've, what they've been doing over the past decade, you know, this option or this opportunity really to, to revitalize Valley Vista and infuse potentially 300 additional students to support, um, that school, their staff and their students to, 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 and also to give our community more options in regards to programs. This is something that we want to continue pursuing. They, they currently have been, um, you know, in conversation, but, but now we really wanted to be more definitive about our direction with this. And, and to bring forward to the board in December, a, a charter petition and MOU for the board to consider as we go through the process of continuing to explore both program, the programs of both sites and, and move towards a new charter school.
Any questions or comments? Yeah.
Could I suggest, I, you know, the signatories on this is the superintendent and the executive of PCS, and then the executive director of Live Oak, and I get that they're kind of equivalent because it's an independent charter. But can we, can I suggest that we have Valley Vista sign on to this too? Because they're a critical stakeholder and, and we've heard plenty, you know, from that community that they want an active voice in this, and it could be a good gesture, well, not more than gesture. I mean, just make sure that they're included in this. Absolutely.
I do have a question. Would you like to have the principal sign on behalf, or?
What do you guys think? Is it the principal and/or, I don't know, PTA, or I, I don't know, uh, principal certainly? Yeah. I mean, the executive director of Live Oak is the person, so that would be equivalent to the principal.
Along, kind of along those lines. And I know I talked to you earlier today about it, but when we were first, when I was first hearing the discussions about the merger, I want to say initially that I'm not opposed to the merger. I understand that, you know, the necessity, but I also am concerned about, you know, the Valley Vista community and the history and honoring Valley Vista and not just doing this as a practical thing. And I remember when we were first, at, at one of the meetings, that we were talking about how this would be a merger that would be combining really powerful things from each thing and creating something new, something different. It wouldn't be Waldorf. It would change some of Valley Vista, but it would honor the best of both, and that Valley Vista would not be subsumed. I feel like it's being subsumed. And the voices that I hear are Waldorf. And so I just want to make sure that this is emerging, that this is something that is different and really exciting, which I think it really could be. But I don't want to lose what makes Valley Vista both now and historically a special place. So I just wanted to make sure that, because some of the letter of intent didn't, I didn't get that feeling from it. So it felt a lot about the public Waldorf education, which is a copyrighted, you know, kind of thing. So, um, uh, that was about all. I want to make sure that the Valley Vista teachers, you know, are, you know, given, given the opportunity to continue first. That Valley Vista is really put at the beginning of, of a lot of the decision-making. I think that's a great idea to put them on there as signature. And then, um, the only other thing was the community engagement piece. It's on a really short schedule if you're putting together an MOU. So I want to make sure that that community piece actually happens and that it's very inclusive. And that it's very inclusive and, um, uh, uh, for everybody.
Yes, uh, uh, I, I know that, um, you know, speaking with the site and with the principal and, and, um, you know, with the union leadership. It's, you know, ensuring that the teachers have, um, you know, rights to stay and, and or if they feel. Um, that's not the right place for them, that there will be a place for them in our, in our district someplace. You know, the, the sites are excited about, um, this, uh, this partnership, they've explored, um, other. Uh, they explore Live Oak School and other schools that offer the Waldorf, um, uh, program. And, uh, they come back quite excited about the potential opportunity. Um, so I know, um, with, uh, talking to the teachers and the principal that they're, everyone seems really excited about that. Uh, the principals has spoken to community members and continue, uh, is continuing to schedule more meetings. Um, they have a parent engagement meeting, uh, uh, coming up in October. I think, uh, two or three that will be scheduled for that. Uh, so, um, the intent of this letter is to, is to, um, provide the Waldorf program. Because it's, I think half of the Live Oak's families are from PCS and it seems to be a, an option that the community seems to want. And being able to provide this option is, and is a, I think, a good opportunity for our community. I think it would not only draw in families at PCS, but other communities outside of PCS as well. But, you know, when we bring the MOU and the charter petition in, in, in December and hopefully provide continuous updates on that process. Um, you know, the, that will be when I think, um, the board can weigh in and decide if this is really what the direction the board wants to take. Um, but, uh, this is least a commitment that we will explore it fully and, um, and, and, and write a new charter petition. Uh, for Valley Vista. Currently, they're sitting at around a hundred and fifty students. So the fear of, of not taking an opportunity that could, you know, um, allow us, uh, a, a lot of, um, control in the direction. Uh, of a dependent charter school, um, I, I, I don't want us to miss that opportunity.
Do you have anything or do you want me to go? Yeah, I, I definitely echo what Maddie is saying about wanting. As much Valley Vista input as humanly possible, um. And really keep all of the amazing things. About Valley Vista and so much of it is the community and the staff and I've. You know, I've gotten emails and I'm sorry that I haven't been able to respond in the last two or three days, uh, but I've read all of the emails. From people that want the merger, from people that don't want the merger. I've talked to people that are really unsure of what that means and. Um, I get those fears and I get that this letter doesn't seem like it's saying a lot and it's because it's not, we're not. We're not dictating exactly what it's going to look like. We want that to come from the community, so. Um, I would just ask that everyone who is invested in this school, in either of these schools becoming a new school, like. We need to all stay invested in shaping what the future of that school. Looks like, I mean, unfortunately for whether it was the way that the district was handling it or. Communication or whatever, we saw a huge decline in enrollment just between spring and. Fall, um, and so it really put the district in a different. Place than we were even six months ago when we were talking about a merger. Uh, because frankly, like if we don't, my understanding is if we don't find some way to merge, uh, like. There's almost no chance of Valley Vista surviving at all. And that is something I don't, not a world I want to live in. Um, we have amazing staff at Valley Vista, we have amazing students and families and. Just. And there's so many great things about Live Oak, like I was one of the first people to be like. Rolling my eyes at Waldorf and how crunchy it is and there are still some things that I don't. Love myself, but like this gives us more. More control over it, it's not an independent board, um. And I think that there are. A lot of opportunities of overlap and. Honestly, like a lot of the families I've talked to that are excited about it are the Latino families, um. So. Yeah, I mean, those are just all my thoughts about it. This isn't an action item, we don't need to take a vote. But we wanted to make sure it was public and that we talked about it in public. Um, and so I hope that there's an MOU that lays out as much as is humanly possible so that. Families everywhere know what this school is going to start to look like and obviously a school will evolve and change, but. You know, decide if they want to go to whatever it ends up being named. I know. People were saying love, like Live Oak at Valley Vista. I don't, that might again be too crunchy for me, but, um. Yeah, even just like a community. Way of voting on the name and voting on the mascot or. Keeping the Viking, which. I have a whole thing about people being mascots. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But yeah, having, having, like even community just creating the new.
Yeah.
Identity, um, I think there are a lot of meaningful ways we can. Make it great and I look forward to an MOU that. Lays that out. Explicitly and because I, it would be awesome to create a new school that everyone is excited about and I know. I know not everyone will be excited about it and not everyone will be happy, but. I do think it's a better alternative than in a year or two, having to shutter Valley Vista and. Have an independent charter school. Come in.
Yeah, no, I echo everything that everyone else has said. A year ago. Was not really on board, um. And I know that the district has suggested different things for Valley Vista, like when we were, um. Creating the dual immersion at McDowell, talked about doing it there. And it, what didn't seem to be what the staff and school community wanted. Then the IB wasn't working and so this probably would not have been my first choice. But it seems like that's where we are now and it's actually something that the staff is excited about. And I hope the school community does get excited and I hope I get excited about it as well at some point too, um. Yeah, but, I mean, you're right, because. Yeah, it's, yeah, I don't, I don't know much more to say, it just, it makes me sad as well to think about, uh, Valley Vista changing, so. I'm just interested to see how the process goes and yeah, I'm hoping that we get lots of voices, um, from both schools.
Any other comments or questions on the letter of intent? So it sounds like the only change we would like to see is add a place for Jamie to sign on. Great. Moving on to student services. The Esmeralda, you're not totally off the hook. Talk to us about sex discrimination and sex-based harassment, would you?
Yes, uh. So this is just, um, a little update to the language in the board policy. It's essentially the same, but there were some Title Nine regulations that came about, um, effective July one, twenty twenty four. So we wanted to change that language to a board policy, actually, we, we just brought in February twenty twenty three to update, so there's a little bit of change there, but not much. Yeah.
Yeah, seems like good. Language, everything I would want to see in there. Um, and complying with federal and state law, especially around Title Nine is great. Because when we got here, we were not doing that. Good times. All right, any other questions or comments on that amended board policy? All right, if not, we'll move on to future business. I mean, I feel like we have a lot of future business. One of the thing. When's the last time we had an ethnic studies update? I think we need an ethnic studies update, Tony. Thank you. Ethnic studies. Yeah. I mean, I, I would, I would, I want a standing update all the time. And then, so we're talking, we're doing a study session on bell schedule and budget. Any other?
Um, just kind of an update, you can, uh, on the parcel tax funds. That, you know, from the one that we just passed for elementary. Um, I just kind of like to know, you know, it sounds like we have gotten some money, but then I, I think. Taxes are due in. December, so.
Can that be part of the budget?
So anyway, I just like an update on how the funds are allocated. Do we have?
Can that be a part of the budget?
Input around it?
Can we make that a part of the budget? And bell schedule, would it fit well there or would it be easier as a separate item?
Either ways.
Okay.
Works for me.
I mean, if it helps with the. You know, in the instruction for the bell, well.
Two different districts.
In two different districts, yeah, yeah, sorry, that's right, it didn't pass.
Do either of you have any future? Topics you want to see? You also don't need to know right now. If anything comes up in the next two weeks, you can email. Any of us and. We can get it on the agenda. Sheldon, you look like you're stewing, is there anything you, okay. All right, with.
I'm, I'm over here stewing, um, so what can? And then we have all these study sessions, maybe in the spring, a special ed study session. Because we had that, um, that report. And then we had a pretty quick presentation, I'm just not sure what it.
And it's one of our LCAP goals, so it'd be good to, January, February, maybe, but.
I mean, there was that whole study that happened.
Right, and there were recommendations, so maybe how we're following up on those recommendations. Any progress we can measure towards our LCAP goals if there, if there is enough data.
That's great.
Well, yeah, it was your idea, of course.
And then I have another one.
Yeah.
I mean, this is probably further down the line, maybe, but, um. I don't know if this needs to be a whole session or just a topic, Esmeralda. Be you, um, about our discipline. I know we've talked about this before, what are our discipline policies look like? Are they too harsh, like, you know, a detention for a retardy? Or like giving kids extra credit for not using the bathroom. During an hour and forty-five minute period. I don't know if that particularly falls under discipline, maybe grading practices, I don't really know, but, um. I would just like to see the discipline policies as well as those types of grading policies. Like what are we giving kids extra credit for? That maybe we shouldn't be.
Oh, like when I got extra credit for coming to school on a day that there was a school shooting threat? Your bestie? It was, it was. Yeah, I think that would be a good item. Um, I don't know if it can come together, because yeah, discipline and like. Incentivize. Extra. Yeah, like extra credit for non-curricular. Thing, I don't know, because some, yeah.
And I don't even know how you would gather all that.
Yeah.
I have faith in you. I mean, I don't know, I just. Or if it needs to be a parent survey, I, or a student survey, I don't know, you students, I don't know, do you guys get extra credit for not using the bathroom?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I have a lot, because I refuse to go to the bathroom, because I want extra credit. They give you like, well, it depends on the teacher, but they give you like passes. And you can like cut them out and get them to the teacher, but each one is worth like one extra credit point, which really at the end of the day, doesn't really do much for your grade, but. Yeah, I don't know. Okay, so grading pol- or extra credit for, um, non-curricular or curricular, I guess in this case, because it does impact grades. So just to kind of do an.
Something about, yeah, if there's. What the po- do we have any policy on extra credit? Because obviously there's some extracurricular things that make sense of like going to a community event. I get why that's extra credit. But not using bodily functions does not seem like.
It's really annoying.
Can imagine, um, and like, uh, open, uh, like, uh, back to school nights and open house. It, I mean, that used to be something that. I don't know whether it's a, a bad thing or not, but it's just that they did use to give extra credit or things like that. Think, um. Fundraisers sometimes.
Yeah. All right, any other future business? All right, if not, I, I almost said convene. I adjourned this meeting at eight fifty-four PM.